My name is Dr. Vanessa Enoch and I met Jamie along the campaign trail as I was running my own race for the Democratic nominee for Ohio's 8th congressional district. And I've been a resident of Westchester, Ohio for about 18 years. I'm the mother of two daughters and I'm also a small business owner. I'm a college educator, a social justice advocate, and like Jamie, I found myself stepping into the race and the fight for people who to give them, to make sure we give them a choice and a champion for change. And so I am currently working on some other social justice efforts. But today I'm here to talk about and to advocate for Jamie as she continues to follow her passion for public service. So as we all know, 2021 is a crucial year for our city with the November 2nd elections that will choose our next leaders, leaders that will need to work together to chart a course for our city's future. And you'll have many choices and it's up to you to learn about the candidates and to decide if their visions resonate with your own. When we have an educated, well-informed participatory voting population, then we know that our democracy is working. So here to talk more about the importance of not only learning about what and whom we're voting for, but also how you can help the causes and the candidates that you care about is the current Cincinnati City Councilman who is also up for reelection, Councilman Greg Landsman. Greg Landsman has spent his career working for children and families. He was born and raised in Cincinnati. He's the son of teachers. And Greg lives by his parents' motto that actions matter more than words. And he will bring us his record of bringing people together to get things done to city council. And he has an extensive national, state, local, and global experience. And he believes strongly in the power of the people to come together to accomplish big things. So welcome Greg.
Thank you, Dr. Enoch. That was really wonderful and very generous. It's great to see all your faces. I wish I could be with you all. I know, you know, it will be soon enough that that we'll all get to be together again in person. But today is a really special day, you know. I, as Dr. Enoch mentioned, my parents were teachers. I was a teacher and am incredibly passionate about children and families, particularly here in the city of Cincinnati, a city that I love. And I've got another educator wanting to join me at City Hall in Jamie Castle. You know her, but there's something really special about having a teacher, somebody who's so close to what's happening in the lives of the children and families in the city. And she's taught all over the city and is a mom, but also a coach and does all these amazing things, a small business owner, you know, having against, you know, somebody who is, you know, so close to the issues that we care so much about, certainly the ones I do that affect children and families. And City Hall and City Council is a place where, you know, you can get a lot of big things done. Before I was on council, we, a lot of us on this call worked together to provide two years of quality preschool for children. And it's been a godsend during the pandemic. It's been able to help a lot of families keep their kids in meaningful preschool. Nearly 10,000 children have been served and the school readiness rates at Cincinnati have skyrocketed, the highest levels ever. On council, we've been able to pass comprehensive eviction prevention reform, including setting up the first ever eviction prevention fund, which has helped well over 1,000 children and families stay in their home in just the first year. So you can imagine a couple of years, you're talking about thousands and thousands of people that are still in their homes because of action that we took. This last year, we passed the largest increase in youth jobs ever. So four times as many young people will get jobs this year than they did last year. And so there's so much that we can do and having somebody who cares deeply about these issues as Jamie does, who also has this other thing that I think is critical right now. And that is the ability, the interest, the commitment to work with everybody else, like the, you know, to get things done and to help the people that we all care about requires working with everybody to do those big things, as Dr. Enoch mentioned. And I just get so excited about a whole host of folks that are running for city council. Jamie is at the top of the list because of these two things. She cares deeply about these issues. She's worked on them her entire life. And she knows that in order to actually deliver, you gotta work with everyone and be part of, you know, coalitions. And she's just delightful to work with, as you all know. So I'm so excited about this and hope you will knock on doors if you're comfortable with that or donate. I'll donate tonight. Hopefully you all will donate. Candidates like Jamie need as much help as they can get. And so please, please give as much time and money as you can because it makes a huge difference. And thank you all for being here and thank you, Jamie, for asking me to say a few words.
Thank you so much, Councilman Landsman. We appreciate you as well as all of the leaders who are on the call today. I see some wonderful leaders here. I know some are going to speak and some are not. Our first woman sheriff is on here right now. Can we give her a round of applause? And I see Lori Quinn Levin and various other leaders, Aftab Puraval, and so many people like Councilman Landsman are here just to say we support you, Jamie, and we look forward to your leadership on council. So thank you again for your words and for sharing your time and your insights today with us, Councilman Landsman. Our next guest is a friend of Jamie's and is a fellow educator for Cincinnati Public Schools. Mark Messerly is a highly beloved music teacher for Hyde Park Schools, serving grades K through six. And his passion and his energy for music and more for his students is so apparent that it can be felt. Mark is also kind of a big deal as the basis of the national and international indie rock band sensation, Wussy. But to his students and coworkers, he is a humble, big-hearted joy to be around. And so if we can all welcome Mark to say a few words as well.
Oh, thank you, Dr. Enoch. That is, that was, those are lovely words and it's wonderful to meet you. So I met Jamie because I taught, well, I teach and have taught her children. And her kids are just like her, you know, creative, hardworking, but most importantly, kind. And you know that the apples don't fall far from the tree. But the, the thing that really cemented our friendship was Jamie decided that our school needed to have a musical. I'm the music teacher, but even I was like, no, that's, it's way too much to put on, to put on. So she volunteered to do this thing, but then because she's Jamie, she didn't just pick something that you could just like hit a recording and go, no. She also didn't just pick the kids who already had training and are already like mini theater majors. No, she opened it up to everybody. We're talking kindergarteners, five-year-olds, all the way up to 12-year-olds. But then as if that inclusivity wasn't enough, she got people and herself created full costumes. She got Xavier to donate these huge, what are they, like 12-foot tall backdrops that can be repainted? And then she hired real musicians to play for these kids, to play the music for these kids. So the thing is, is that this is, this is an elementary musical and you could just, you could do something and the kids would have fun, but Jamie took it to that next level. So like I watched the rehearsals and it was, it's the equivalent of herding cats onto a stage to perform cats, but thankfully better than cats. You got five-year-olds hitting their marks. You got, you know, seven-year-olds singing their songs like rock stars or Broadway stars, and the kids had a blast. And that is to me, the essence of why I support Jamie being on city council and also just one of the things I respect about her. She sees a need. She does it right. She steps up and with an eye always towards including everyone and a passion and this work ethic to get the job done right. So, but, so that's, that's just my little kind of anecdote as to seeing Jamie work. But there's also this other thing that happened when Jamie decided to run for office last time. Because there's this like, almost like antiquated notion that teaching or sitting on city council is a form of providing service, service to the community, service to those in need, or just maybe even giving back as a way of repaying the gifts and privileges that have come our way. And these last four years or so created in a lot of us, myself included, this sense of hopelessness. I went to marches for the first time and they filled me with energy and hope, but I still didn't really know what to do. How do I help? But Jamie, instead of just kind of doom scrolling, she decided it's like, all right, I'm gonna, I see a need, I'm gonna step up, I'm gonna fill it and do it right. It was her first campaign and she ran it like a pro. And the thing is, is like, this is what inspired me. She didn't become or choose to go into politics for any of the reasons that people cynically typically attribute to people. She did it because she saw there were people who had no voice. There were people who were hurting. And instead of just saying, what do I do? She said, all right, I'm gonna run for, you know, a national seat. So I feel like Jamie reminded me that that's what this is supposed to be. You are supposed to run for office as an act of service. You're saying that you feel called to give your time, to give your love, to give a massive amount of energy because people need someone in their corner. And a lot of people do not feel, and justifiably so, that there is no, that there's anyone in their corner. But not everyone is meant to be, to serve in this way. Like I feel like I connect with my community via music. The way I try to give back is by teaching and building kids up. But Jamie does have the skill set and she does have the mindset to make a difference in people's lives. And I just, yeah, unequivocally believe that she will be an amazing asset to the city council and actually help change this community for the better. So thank you for giving me the opportunity to rave a little bit. She's good people. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Mark. And I couldn't agree with you more. You know, one of the things that I loved about Jamie when I met her for the very first time is her authentic leadership style. Jamie really cares and she does, she pours everything that she has into the work that she does. And we, it is so apparent and we all who know her and who have had an opportunity to experience being in Jamie's presence, it is, you know, it's something that you notice right away. She makes very authentic connections with people. And thank you for sharing those things about Jamie, Mark, and being here to be an advocate for her. So to introduce Jamie, we're so grateful to have with us this evening the current Hamilton County Clerk of Courts and the current mayoral candidate for the city of Cincinnati, Aftab Puraval. Aftab has been so supportive of Jamie from knocking doors with her in 2020 to joining us today. Aftab lives in Clifton with his wife Whitney and his cutie pie little son Bodie. In his campaign for mayor, he's focused on making sure our communities bounce back after COVID and that Cincinnati is a home not just for some of us, but for all of us. So if we can all give Aftab a warm welcome, the floor is yours, Aftab.
Thank you so much, Dr. Enoch. We, I've known you for so long. First off, let's give her a round of applause. She's so humble. She won't brag on herself, but she has been fighting so hard in our northern communities in her, in her various runs to prioritize, as Councilman Landsman has been working on children and families to prioritize equitable access to healthcare and to hold our leaders on the national level and the local level accountable. So thank you so much, Doc, for everything you do. Cincinnati, what is up? We are here for Jamie Castle. She is coming in strong. I'm so excited. This is a who's who. Doc Enoch just mentioned it. I know we're going to give shout outs to other folks, but this is a who's who of not just elected officials and candidates who are incredibly important, like my friend Mary and Charmaine McGuffey. But man, we've got some activists on here. Heidi Rosales, Rob Wydenville, not even from the city. That's how impactful Jamie is. Catherine McGuire is here, Crystal, Nicole, I mean, so many of my friends are here. I love Tara DeHalsey. I love seeing everybody's background. I have shamelessly put books behind me as Doc Enoch has and as Mark has to convince you that I'm smart as a, as a, just a desperate ploy to ingratiate myself into your homes. But I gotta say, I'm excited about Jamie Castle. The person who is the most excited is Brewster Rhodes. Because he, he is in the middle of a workout, y'all. I mean, he is in Key West. He's got his tank top on. He's got his guns out. He is biking his butt off. But he was like, I can't miss Jamie Castle's kickoff. My, I can't, I can't miss my workout, but I also can't miss Jamie Castle's workout. So Brewster.
Great to be here. Thank you. Go Jamie.
I love that. I love that. But Jamie, 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 we are here for Jamie. God, she has just been such a positive force in our town for really her entire life. She's, she's a dedicated mother as Councilman Landsman and as Mark mentioned, she's an educator. She's a lifelong Cincinnatian. I mean, you know, she has, she's been a longtime volunteer leader in her community, in her children's school and at her church, the Unitarian Universalist Church. But, but what I want to talk about a little bit more in depth is something Mark touched on. We're just so lucky that someone like her, with her wealth of experience, with her personality, with her passion and her commitment, decided to become involved in local government and decided to do that right now when quite frankly, we need her and people like her the most. Just in the most recent past, when a leader was needed, Jamie stepped up to run for Congress in a very difficult congressional district for Democrats. I mean, she was, she was willing to fight to give the people a choice. And in that race, Jamie succeeded in giving the progressive voters of Ohio too, who frankly typically don't have a lot of reason for optimism. She gave them a voice. She traveled nonstop. I saw her do this. She traveled nonstop throughout her eight county district. When I ran for Congress, it was like one and a half counties. She ran eight counties wide. I mean, the second congressional starts in the downtown Cincinnati and basically goes to West Virginia. It's insane. She was driving all across the state of Ohio to make sure that people knew her vision and make sure that those folks felt empowered and that they had a voice, making real connections with people who really aren't used to being listened to. I mean, everyone saw how hard she worked, how creative she was as a first-time candidate during, during a historic pandemic. She personally sewed, I don't know how to sew, so this is remarkable to me, but she personally sewed over 400 masks for donations to hospital workers, police officers, and everyday citizens. She gave up everything so she could help down-ballot candidates get elected. And because of her leadership, we got a majority on the Court of Appeals. We got a majority on Common Pleas. So many Democrats. I know Charmaine's here and I know she'll give Jamie a lot of credit for supporting her and helping her. Myself, Hamilton County Clerk of Courts, a lot of the down-ballot candidates owe a lot to Jamie. And listen, not a lot of people know this. She certainly doesn't talk about it. But Jamie, in a, in a top congressional race that costs so much money, she gave a lot of money to the local party, a lot of money, more money than a lot of other candidates. And when candidates give money to the party, that's all they talk about. They beat their chest, you know, Landsman knows this. They talk, they talk about it all the time. I'm so grand. I gave all this money to the party. Jamie doesn't say a word about it. Because she, she, she does what is right. She uses her voice to lift up others, not herself. And I know I keep referencing, but Landsman's absolutely right. That's the kind of person that we need in City Hall. That's the kind of person we need on council. That's the kind of person we need to lead Cincinnati into the next decade to win the next decade. Because we're gonna all have to work together. And Jamie is nothing but, but someone who loves working on teams and is an incredible team player. And as we look forward to the city council race, Jamie is up to the task on the tough work of communicating her vision. She's spoken with intelligence and compassion and class during countless interviews, town halls, and two live debates with her opponent in the past. I mean, Jamie is, is from the people and for the people. And she has boundless energy and a drive to get the work done. I know, I know that she has just a deep love for Cincinnati and that she's committed to being part of the leadership that will take our city into the next decade. And really make sure that when we grow, we are growing equitably for all 52 of our neighborhoods. So it's just such an honor to introduce my friend, your next city councilwoman, Jamie Castle.
Oh my God. Thank you all so much. It really is just, my heart is full. My world is so much bigger. I see so many faces. My, my parents are here, my sister and so many friends and people that I've only known probably like a year. A lot of you I met during the congressional race. And it's just amazing how much you all mean to me that you're here tonight. I do want to give a shout out before I speak to the elected officials and candidates that took their time to be here tonight. I want to thank my speakers first, Dr. Vanessa Enoch. The first time I met her, we were serving care packages in Fountain Square. Do you remember that? Before one of the protest marches to the homeless down there. And that was an eye-opening thing. And you know, she's just, she's of the people as well. And I had that connection with her. Thank you so much for being here tonight. For Greg Landsman, and he's my fellow Mount Washington buddy here and teacher. We had that connections too. And he showed up last year. He didn't need to for all us candidates on the trail. And that meant a whole lot. I really appreciate you being here tonight. And he is running for reelection as well, folks. So know that. And my buddy Mark, I'm so thankful that you're here. We have so much fun. I teach at Hyde Park School, Mount Washington School, and Walnut Hills. Sometimes I do other schools if I can, but I try to focus on those because they really do need me a lot. But when I'm at Hyde Park, I'm the honorary other special teacher because they've got the Latin, the gym, the music, the arts, the steam. And then I'm the theater kind of girl. So it's a lot of fun being with all them. But yes, my heart is full. Thank you. And my friend, Aftab, who is our Hamilton County Clerk of Courts, running for mayor. Thank you so much. I have some stories to share when I do my talk. I also want to point out, folks that are here, we do have Mary Gartner, who is running as a Democratic candidate for Anderson Township trustee. Welcome, Mary. And we have Charmaine, Sheriff Charmaine McGuffey, our Hamilton County Sheriff. I was so happy to canvass for her. She had a, you know, hard primary and was just so tough as nails. So I didn't have a primary last year, but made sure to participate and lift up folks. And man, that was something. We were so excited. All right. We also have Heidi Rosales, also a Mount Washington friend who ran for judicial candidate last year. Hello, Heidi. Thank you. We have Lori Quinn Levin, former councilwoman. Thank you so much for being here. I want to give a shout out to Alicia G. She was a writing candidate in Claremont County for Ohio's Rep for 66. And this gal, she was the one in Bethel who organized the Black Lives Protest Matter protest. And that was the one where 700 anti-protesters showed up and it was terrifying. And she took that and ran with it though. She made it a discussion for the community to come together and heal. And then she stepped up to run. I mean, amazing. She's, she's a future leader. Keep an eye on Alicia. I do want to say hello to Brent Edwards, who was my campaign manager for my congressional run. I mean, also my Mount Washington buddy. Thank you for being here to support me tonight as well. There are just so many of you that helped me so much volunteering and emotional support. And I really do appreciate you all being here tonight. Now, if you're someone who maybe doesn't know me as well, I want to say, my name is Jamie Castle. I grew up in Green Hills, Ohio, which a lot of people are like, where? It's woods. And it was fun growing up there because I didn't understand that whole east side, west side that Cincinnati has going on because we were kind of right in the middle. But I went to Roger Bacon High School and graduated in 95. And I went back there to teach after I graduated from Miami University in 99. And I taught high school English and I did all the theater there as well. I always had a job on the side as well in restaurants. And I think that also gave me that empathy that a lot of people have that have come from the service industry. Man, because you have to have patience and you have to have that foresight of what people need to really take care of people. But that's been a part of my life for a really long time. My husband's here tonight too. And he still is in the restaurant business. So that's always something on my mind, especially with the shutdowns of the pandemic that I've seen so many people hurting with the theater business too. Those two backgrounds of mine, I see a lot of friends that are struggling very hard right now. But fast forward, I live in Mount Washington now. I'm married. I have two kids, 12-year-old girl Lucy and 10-year-old boy Finnegan. And we have been here for about 10 years. We were in Columbia, Tuscaloosa for a while. And I stayed home with them and they were little to raise them. But I can't always, I need to always be busy. So I started my small business when I was nine months pregnant with my son. Because you know, I needed more to do. I needed that creative outlet, but I also needed to have a part of myself. And I did that for a long time until I needed a church for my kids to grow up in. And so I found this Unitarian Universalist Church in Anderson and just really became a part of that and the religious education there. And when my kids were school age, I was in their schools a lot. So for a long time I was of service to the schools, volunteering, to the church, volunteering in leadership positions as well as the PTO president and then the church president. And that was my life. I was coaching soccer, doing theater directing and just kind of juggling all the things like a lot of moms do. I never thought I would get into politics and I never really paid that much attention to it until 2016. And I think this is a common story for a lot of people because it was a big slap in the face of, wait, what? How did we get here? And things were falling apart. And that was a good thing in a sense that people had to pay attention. They had to because things weren't good and people needed to realize that we have to hold our politicians accountable. We have to speak up. We have to step up. And I've seen so many of my people, my friends volunteer for candidates, writing postcards. And that was something I was like, yeah, I see that. It's a way for people to get involved. Last, it was 2019 in Anderson. A friend was running for the school board there and she was a Democrat and we got involved with that campaign. And she won and it was a big deal because Anderson was very traditionally red. So for her to win the school board, we're all high-fiving. But that was the time when the impeachment trials were happening, the first impeachment. And One Strip was a part of that. And my friend said, hey, he's awful. We need to get rid of him. And we're all like, yeah. But then it was brought up that we didn't have a candidate and time was running out. And the serious question was posed, one of us should do it. Who's going to do it? And I don't know what made me not scared. It was just, I will do it. Teach me how to do it. I will surround myself with people. I'll figure it out. We just, we have to try this. And I did. And right away, people stepped up to help me. It was amazing. And I remember Aftab, this was in January, you sat down with me and we had coffee and tea. And he was helping me with guidance of what he went through when he ran for Congress. And he was very straight up and genuine. He said, it's going to be hard work. You'll be raising a lot of money. You're going to be on the phones. It's not glamorous. And then something can happen completely out of your control for good or for bad. And you can't do anything about it. And he was talking about, I think the caravan, you know, came and made all the Democrats look scary. But for me, I get hit with a pandemic, like good or bad, I just had to learn how to navigate that. So I would never regret. So I would never regret going for Congress. We never had polls for our race and I never wanted them. Because it would never change what I was doing. I was in it and I was gonna put my whole self into it. And that was my whole focus in 2020. Some people had come to me during the summer or before the election even happened, saying, alright, let's think about, you know, your future after this. And I'm like, no, no. This is what I'm doing. This is my complete focus. This is what I want to accomplish. So I gave it my all. I knew it was a huge team effort. I knew I couldn't do it on my own. So working with the Hamilton County Democratic Party, if they needed more money for slates to print, I said, I will make more phone calls. Just tell me what you need. I'm here for you. And it was never about me. It was always bigger than me. It was about, you know, really fighting for the people. For the people was my motto. So election night comes and I was strangely calm. You know, I was proud of myself. And it was interesting, the um, the votes were coming in and I had won Hamilton County. And I remember my mother-in-law was like, oh my god, you won. I was like, nope, we have seven more counties to go. And I, I knew, you know, ultimately the way it was gonna go, but it was really, the validation of having Hamilton behind me was amazing. And that was like, good enough. And one of the media producers called me and said, we're getting ready to call your race. Is it okay if I call it? And I said, of course, you know, you have to call it. You're doing your job. It's no big deal. But thank you for checking in on me. And he's like, I just want you to know, you did a really good job. You should, you should run again. And I was like, okay. My big thing was I can't wait to just crash after this. Totally gonna crash. Um, and then story, I, it's not often you paint your opponent nice, but I called to concede to Brad Wenstrup and he said, you did a really good job. You should run again. And that was a very strange validation. I was like, okay, Brad Wenstrup, congratulations. And there was, I think for a couple of days, a little bit of crashing, a lot of, you know, what just happened. And I know Neil Kelly, he asked me like, what made you run for city council? Like, I didn't see that coming. And it's a really good question because it wasn't like on my radar at all. When I saw the people running for city council last year, I was helping them. I was signing their petitions. And it never really crossed my mind that this could be something I would be doing. But I had Sher Brown calling me too, saying, alright, you gotta run again. And my friend Aftab, you gotta run again. You know, all this encouragement and just my supporters and friends from eight counties saying, alright, what's next? Because we're behind you again. You gotta keep going. And I found that I had the energy for it still. Because running for something's one thing, but actually winning and getting to work, that's what I want to do. I'm very much for the people and I see myself working on that team, making that collaboration happen. We have an opportunity this year that excites me. We're gonna have so much new leadership and we can choose that team, that team that can work together and plan the future for our city. I want our city to be a place where my kids want to stay, people want to move too. My daughter, when she was in first grade, told us she's gonna move to California to work for Activision because they had Skylanders. But part of me was really sad. I knew that was premature, but you know, I want my kids to stay here. That would be really cool to be proud of Cincinnati and just excited to be here. My father worked at City Hall. He was in the assistant, assistant city solicitor for the city of Cincinnati. And he's here. You can wave, Dad. There he is. And so I grew up, my mom would take us on the bus downtown and there was a little candy shop under the steps. And we would get our candy and look at the stained glass in City Hall and she would walk us to Caples and get treats. But it was such a big, it was just this amazing experience to go downtown. And the idea that I can get there is exciting. He was the one who first told me about the whole project with Fort Washington Way. And that when it was built, it was built in a way that decks could be established on top someday in the future. And I think that's something I would like to be a part of, to continue that project would be amazing. To connect the banks to our urban core and build something for the community that would bring in revenue and also have space for the community. I just see so much potential and possibility. And I've got that, you know, joyfulness and excitement and positivity that I bring to the table too. You know, I'm a teacher, I'm a mother, I'm a caregiver. I'm always gonna put people first. And I think we need that in leadership. And I want you to know that I do bring that to the table. I know that city issues are different than the federal issues that I really deep dove into last year. And you know, I'm here for it. I'm going to take a lot of time over the next few months and have some Facebook Live events and invite guests that are experts in each of these issues and learn more about the problems and ways to solve them in a way that you can learn too. Cause it's easy to sit back and you know, think you have an idea of how things should be fixed. But there's always more to these problems. And I think there's more solutions that we haven't thought of yet. So I want to invite you all to visit my website. It is castleforcincinnati.com. And you can always email me. It's castleforc Cincinnati@gmail.com. But be a part of my team. Share my social media. Tell your friends about me. I need a lot of signatures for these petitions. If you are able to sign, if you're a city citizen here, if you live in the city limits, or if you can be a circulator of the petitions as well. I need as much help as I can and I am gonna ask for it all the time because I know, again, this is us. This is bigger than myself and this is an opportunity for all of us. I want you to know that I am gonna put my all into it and I'm always gonna be appreciative. I want you to, um, do, 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 there it is. CastleforCincinnati@gmail.com. Please do reach out to me anytime you want to talk or you have an issue that's important to you. And just keep in touch with me because I'm here for you and I'm so excited again for you all to be here tonight. I am gonna close this event and thank you for sharing a part of your Saturday evening with me. Um, I didn't want to have a question and answer because I, I want all these things to get more time. So if you do have questions for me, please do email me them. And then I can have more events that we can take a lot of time to pick apart these things that we care about. And I just, thank you so much. I'm, I'm gonna say goodbye.
Alright, can we?
Have a great night.
Jamie, a round of applause. And before everybody leaves, I want to call your attention to the fact that there is a link in your chat. So you can go to Jamie's, uh, her website and donate. And I also see an ActBlue link in that chat as well. Go there and donate. For those of you who will watch this on social media, um, her website again is castleforc Cincinnati.com. Make sure you go and donate and get Jamie started right now so that she'll have a good foundation and she'll be able to run a really strong race. Again, thanks everybody for being here. We appreciate you. And um, please do help Jamie in whatever way that you can. Thank you. Happy birthday, Crystal. Bye-bye, guys.